City Council meeting on May the 15th. May we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Bateen?
Here.
Councillor Bookie?
Here.
Councillor White?
Here.
Mayor Marbury?
Here. And the first thing on tonight's agenda will be the artwork for the children. We've asked the children to do a poster design contest for my Durango. And we are so fortunate that some of these kiddos are in our chambers tonight. Ms. Blake, if you would bring up the slides, we're going to be showing you their artwork. And from kindergarten and second grade is Malaya Martinez. If you're here in the audience, please come forward, Malaya. And this is Malaya, she's from second grade from Animus Valley Elementary. Second place is Ingrid Jurgensen, a first grader from Needham. Ingrid? And third place goes to Sandra Guyer, a second grader from Needham. Sandra, are you here? First place, I said first. If you all will just stay here, we're going to call some more kiddos up. This is the section third grade through fifth grade. Third place, Ian Hasty. He is a fourth grader. Thank you, Ian. And there's your nice work. Second place is Huxley Miller, a fourth grader from. And first place is Samuel Yagan, a fifth grader from Sunnyside. Come on up. These posters are going to be hung and reproduced in facilities all over our community. So we want to keep an eye out for all their good artwork. Now we're going into sixth and eighth graders. Third place is Andre Griggs, eighth grader at Mountain Middle. Andre, are you here? Second place is Sarah Phelps, a seventh grader at Escalante. Sarah, are you here? And first place is Rachel Ager, a sixth grader at Miller. Rachel, come on down. And now we go to ninth through 12th grade. Third place is Mallory Liggett, a ninth grader at DHS. Mallory, are you in the house? Second place is Taylor Schwimmer, a ninth grader at DHS. And first place is A.J. Swank, an 11th grader at Bayfield. And A.J. Swank. Okay, why don't you kiddos come right from the dais. Come on over here. And I think we can get all of your pictures at one time and the audience at home can see you and see our budding artists. And we're so happy that they were able to come tonight to City Council. Let's give them all a round of applause. Thank you all for coming tonight, and we celebrate your accomplishments. And you can go and sit with your families. The next part of the agenda is our proclamations and our Buddy Poppy proclamations. We'll give them just a second to leave the chambers. Is Dolly Childs here? Dolly? Dolly Childs. Dolly Childs is from the VFW Post 4031. And so I'm going to be reading the proclamation of the Durango Buddy Poppy Days, May 24th through May 26th. Whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas the VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, widows and orphans of deceased veterans, and area children's programs such as Bicycle Safety Week and the Elementary Reading Medallion Program. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I, Sweetie Marbury, Mayor of Durango, do proclaim May 24th through May 26th Buddy Poppy Days. We urge the community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously, by obtaining a little red Buddy Poppy, and set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. The next one is a proclamation, and accepting will be Sarah Goodpastor, if you're here, and Carol Schur. This is Durango Gun Violence Awareness, if you'll come over here. Gun Violence Awareness Days, June 2nd and 3rd. Whereas gun accidents and gun violence touch all segments of our society, impacting people.
You know what? I really have a hard time reading this because I have a personal story. I'm not going to share it about gun violence. So this is hard for me. Hey, Dick, can you come read this? Sorry. It's a personal family story. I'm not going to share. But I can't. I can't do it.
This is a proclamation on Durango Gun Violence Awareness Days, June 2nd and 3rd, 2018. Whereas gun accidents and gun violence touch all segments of our society, impacting people of all ages, increasing the probability of fatalities and incidents of domestic violence, raising the death toll in intentional shootings, and among those who attempt suicide, and placing children and young people at increased risk. And whereas maintaining the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes in unison with keeping guns away from those who should not have access to them. And whereas Gun Violence Awareness Days will take place across the country this June to encourage a public commitment to work together to support and find solutions to save lives from gun violence and to honor individuals and communities impacted by gun violence by wearing orange, a color long associated with gun safety that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas to honor all those whose lives have been cut short by gun accidents and gun violence, the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, the families of those who have lost loved ones, the families who have lost loved ones to gun violence, and the communities and schools where mass shootings have occurred, a national coalition of organizations has annually designated Gun Violence Awareness Day during the first weekend in June. And whereas anyone can honor this movement by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd and 3rd to help raise awareness of gun violence and to honor the lives and lost human potential of those whose lives have been taken and forever changed by gun violence. And whereas we want to renew our commitment to reducing gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and to encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children and our communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sweetie Marbury, Mayor of Durango, on behalf of the City Council hereby declare June 2nd and 3rd, 2018 to be Durango Gun Violence Awareness Days to honor and remember victims and survivors of gun violence and encourage our citizens, businesses, organizations, and agencies to work collaboratively to support our local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of life.
We just want to say thank you to the mayor and the City Council for recognizing June 2nd and 3rd as Durango Gun Violence Awareness Days and the Wear Orange events that are happening around the country in honor of victims of gun violence. The Wear Orange event was originally created in honor of a 15-year-old who passed away from a stray gunshot after performing in the 2013 Presidential Inaugural Parade. And her friends and family got together to celebrate this day each year in honor of her life and to raise awareness about gun violence. On average, more than 89 people die from gun violence every day, more than 33,000 a year. Two-thirds of those are suicides, which are three times more likely to happen if there's a gun in the home. Fatalities from mass shootings make up a small fraction of overall firearm deaths, less than 3% of the total. 1.7 million children live in a home with an unlocked or loaded gun. Of youths who commit suicide with firearms, 82% obtain the firearm from the home. It's usually a parent's firearm. As Mayor Marbury once told me, "All politics are local." Well, that's true for gun violence, too. The most likely scenario is that we'll be exposed to it in our home. And if we can pause the national rhetoric for a moment on both sides to work together in our community and Durango, we may be able to prevent the next tragedy. We must work together to securely store firearms in the homes and vehicles to avoid unintentional shootings, domestic violence, suicides. We must ask about the presence of guns and whether or not they're secured in homes. We must model responsible behavior with guns and recognize the risk of teen suicide and other warning signs so we can prevent the next tragedy in our community. Thank you for your attention, and we welcome you, let's say it, we welcome you to our rally to work more collaboratively on this issue on June 3rd in Buckley Park at 2:00 PM, where we hope we'll have gun owners and non-gun owners, and every opinion, so we can all work together to make progress, especially Durango. Thanks.
The next part of the agenda is called Review of the Consent Agenda. It's intended to allow the City Council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Number Six. May we have a roll call, please, for those?
Item 4.1 through 4.3, our approval of minutes. 4.1, the regular meeting of March 5th, 2018. 4.2, the regular meeting of April 17th, 2018. 4.3, the study session of April 24th, 2018. Item 4.4 is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Resolution R. 2018-16, Accepting the Annexation Petitions for the Woodside Condominium Annexation and Setting a Public Hearing Date for June 18th, 2018. 4.5 is Discussion of Possible Action Concerning City Council Goals and Top Five Policy Priorities for 2018-2019. And Item 4.6 is a Request for Public Hearing Concerning an Amendment of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango Repealing Section 15-54F of the Code Related to Limits on Jury Trials in Municipal Court. And the proposed date for this hearing is June 5th, 2018.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to take one off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
I'm making motions of religion.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Yussit?
Yes.
Councillor Bookie?
Yes.
Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And the next part is public participation. Ron, do you have the sign-in sheet? I'll read this while he looks to see. Public participation is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that do not appear otherwise on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to City Council. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda shall sign up prior to the meeting identifying their name and address on the form provided at the meeting. Citizens will be called individually by name by the mayor to come to the podium and address the City Council. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city manager will signal 30 seconds remaining by raising his hand. Any audiovisual materials must be provided to the city clerk on or before noon of the day of the meeting.
We don't have anyone. Doctor Goodpastor signed here, but she's already.
Certainly. We're moving into the section called Council Reports and Actions. And so this is the time for my fellow councillors to report. And Chris Bateen?
I'm going to pass, given the length of the agenda.
I'm going to pass, given the length.
Okay. Councillor Bookie?
I'll pass as well.
Councillor White?
Nope.
I do need to.
Oh, you're not going to pass?
Okay.
A couple of things. I want to announce that although I am no longer having coffee with the mayor, since I'm not the mayor, I still am having my hear-to-hear office hours Thursday mornings at 9:00 at the Steaming Bean unless I have a conflicting engagement as I did last week. The couple of recent events, one of which was the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission Youth Expo that took place on Wednesday, May 2nd. I think we have to owe our teenagers a debt of gratitude for having produced the only rainy day in a month. And fortunately, they were able to move inside to the Carnegie Building and have quite a successful event. We had a sort of a debriefing meeting with the commission yesterday as they're looking ahead to next year and trying to compile lessons from their, the year's operations and also the youth expo. The Literary Festival with Carl Bernstein was an outstanding presentation with the customary, very witty introduction from the city manager, which really deserves an announcement. And yesterday morning, we had the official dedication of Lake Night Horse, which was great ribbon cutting after many, many years, 50 years from the very beginning of the Animus La Plata project until the opening for recreation. There are many, many events on the calendar. I will simply refer people to calendars@durangogov.org and also downtowndurango.org. Looking down, the other really important meeting that I do want to cite this week is Thursday evening. We have the third public engagement meeting around the budget issues that the city is facing. We really urge everyone to participate. There have been many, many inputs, which is actually part of the agenda documentation for some of the stuff tonight. And I think it's really important to highlight that.
And it is where?
And that is.
Scott?
Scott. Scott Rury as an added inducement. And I believe staff has promised everybody they get a free drink ticket for coming.
Councillor, I just wanted to thank you for your time with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council this past year, each month. I know that they appreciated it, so thank you so much.
I have some not-so-good news to announce, that the 4th of July fireworks has been canceled. Because we are in extreme drought conditions, it's prudent and wise for the city to do this. So I know we have been there before, and hopefully the weather will come back again in our future. But for this year, there will be no fireworks. I also wanted to let city residents have a heads-up that on June 5th, we'll probably be announcing some type of watering restriction. And also that there is a no-smoking signs going up at all of our trailheads. I wanted you to be aware of that. Smoking, flicking it out of a car, going on a hike and tossing it, it's just not acceptable during our fire season. So those are some things I needed to talk to the public about. I've also called on the city manager to give us a sales tax and a lodger's tax report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Marbury. So tonight, I'm presenting the April sales tax report, and this would be for sales that occurred in March. Sales tax was up 5.9%, and that brings us to 2.6% year-to-date. The lodger's tax was up 9.5%, and that brings us to 1% year-to-date. And Mayor Marbury, you also asked me for an explanation of how we put the budget together. And what I would ask you is, it's a complicated process, and maybe we can break it into chunks. And tonight, I can address the revenue piece, and then we can have successive meetings where I can take another chunk at a time so we can better inform the public. If that meets your needs, I'd be happy to proceed.
Yes, I mean, sometimes we hear about balanced budgets and living within your means, and so the city always has a balanced budget that's presented to the council. So would you like to begin, please?
I would. We basically are talking about solving a problem for the general fund. And the other funds are more of a business-type enterprise. They're called enterprise funds. And the fees that we collect operate, pay for the operating expenses of water, sewer, airport, transit, and so forth. So I'm not going to talk about the enterprise funds for tonight, just the general fund and just the revenues, so we can do the expenses at another time. We start the budget cycle in July, and that's when we have six months of experience in the current year. And that tells us, as I've just announced the monthly sales tax report, where we stand with respect to the budget. The city manager is obligated by charter and by statute to present a balanced budget. And if we detect that revenues are down or expenses are up, we have to make changes to the budget, and we present that to the council if you have to do a supplemental appropriation and put more money toward a project. Or in this year's case, we may have to spend more money enforcing some of the issues of camping in our public lands. So forecasting revenues are done in about a year in advance. And revenues are, different revenues have different characteristics. Property tax is fairly stable, and sales tax is fairly volatile. We receive much more revenue from sales tax than we do from property tax. And then when you compare the other revenue sources, such as licenses, permits, fees, charges, they make up a very small part of the budget. The City Council, over the years, has budgeted wisely. We don't have a contingency fund, and we exhausted that contingency back in '09 when we had the Great Recession. So we have to be sure that what we're presenting to the City Council can be achieved. So we're typically conservative in the revenue projections. And this year, with respect to sales tax, we budgeted no increase. Today, I just announced a positive number. Every month has been different. And we have several reasons that we think are impacting the sales tax, such as internet sales, the decline of the population in San Juan County, New Mexico. They've lost 15,000 or more people. That's almost the population of Durango. And their disposable income is no longer available to the merchants in Durango. We also have a declining enrollment at Fort Lewis College. College students spend money, and they're good at it. I should say, they spend their parents' money, and they're good at that. But if we want to look at how to project revenue, there's a lot of factors that are considered. And the basic formula of revenue is the base times the rate equals the revenue that we put in the budget. So the base, the tax base, would be all the assessed valuation for residential properties, multifamily properties, commercial, industrial, times the mill rate that the City Council sets. And I'd like to just explain that for a minute. Most property owners who have a mortgage pay their mortgage company. The mortgage company pays the taxes, so it's really invisible to the property owner. And what happens in property valuations and sales, it gets confusing. So we use the assessed valuation. The county assessor assesses your property and gives you a number, and it's done every other year. And that is the number we use to apply the mill rate. That is not what you would sell your house for. So the assessed value is typically lower than what the market would bear. You would always sell your house for more than the assessed value. And that's something that, when we're talking about how much would a tax increase cost me as a homeowner, don't look at what you could sell your house for. Pull out your records or go online and check with the assessor on how much it's assessed. And that'll give you the information you need to know on how much a tax rate would impact you. So with respect to property taxes, I believe in 1981, the property tax for the city was 2.507 mils. And last year, the voters increased the city property tax by 2.5 mils. And that increase is specifically and entirely for the Durango Fire Protection District. We get the money, it's collected by the county treasurer, they give us the check, and we write a check to the Durango Fire Protection District. So it did not increase any money coming to the general fund for all the expenses in the general fund, which would be mainly parks and rec, streets, and police. Those are the big departments. And I should say, Parks and Rec has access to dedicated sales tax, so it's not as big of a drain as police and streets entirely are from sales tax and the general fund. So what we try to do is expand the base. And right now, there are five hotels going through the planning process. These five hotels, if I count up the rooms really quickly, probably around 500 new rooms coming into the inventory. Probably 18 months from now, we'll have them all up and running, hopefully. So we try to expand the base. We've invested in part of a partnership with the state of Colorado and La Plata County for a $99 million highway improvement to relocate Farmington Hill, Highway 550, where it connects to Highway 160. And that will bring all the traffic that comes from the south directly to the interchange, where you will see the Three Springs development. And hopefully, those traffic counts will cause for companies to go and invest in some regional retail. We're likely to see a supermarket and other types of regional retail. So we're expanding the base by making that investment. We've also, the council, at the last meeting, approved the Camino and North Main character district plans. We had a very successful main event a few weeks ago, and you can see all the activity and interest along Main since we started that planning process. So that's all positive news. With respect to the sales tax, we lose about, somewhere around $47 million in leakage to San Juan County, New Mexico. Those are shoppers who drive across the border into San Juan County and spend money in another state. So that's money that is not available to the state. They collect 2.9%. It's not available to the county, it collects 2%, and it's not available to us, we collect 3%. So that's part of the education. If we can educate the public to try to shop locally, and for those items that cannot be acquired locally, what are the next best alternatives? There is a Supreme Court case, I think it's a North Dakota case, and the retailer, I think it's Wayfair, that should be decided in June. And if that's decided in favor of cities, that may bring us access to internet sales. So we have our fingers crossed that that'll be a positive for us, and we can help stem the leakage that goes to the internet. So maybe it's, I should wrap up, we have seven public hearings. But if we can understand better how the forecasting is done, how the revenues are calculated, if we master the prediction for sales tax and property tax, those are the two biggest revenues. And the City Council decides on licenses and fees, for example, permit fees. And the city council decides on licenses and fees, for example, permit fees. If you want to encourage an activity, you lower the fee. If you want to discourage the activity, you raise the fee. And in some cases, you want the fee to recover the cost of administering that program. So without getting into too much detail, we've brought to the city council analyses of different fees and charges. And you've given us direction on what you want to raise, what you want to keep the same, what you want to decrease. We just approved brand-new international building codes, fire code, plumbing, mechanical, and some of those fees will change. So we try to keep current. And one of the reasons we do is if you skip a few years, then the percent of increase becomes exorbitant. If you keep up with those changes, then those revenues will offset the expenses. So I think I'm going to stop there. But I do have one other thing. You mentioned fireworks. And you also mentioned that we're looking at restrictions. And just to clarify for the public, we're in the process of developing a comprehensive announcement on what we expect and what we predict will happen with our water supply and also the fire conditions. I'll be meeting later this week with the fire chief. The Department of Local Affairs has called a meeting on Monday of next week of all the agencies, emergency managers, city managers, and so forth, so they can debrief us on what the governor's, what we call executive order, said. Our emergency manager, who's in the audience, has met with the director of the State Office of Emergency Management. So we're as prepared as you can get. But we feel it's important to get the message out correctly. And there is a relationship between water conservation and fire mitigation. We don't want to penalize our residents anymore than we have to in terms of expenses or restrictions. But we want to keep the community safe. And the water and fire message need to be consistent. So as you indicated, Mayor, on the 5th, you'll be able to read something to the public. We won't, we don't expect to have to revise that. But we will keep looking forward. Every week, we may make some adjustments to the water based on precipitation. If we're lucky enough to get monsoons in July, then we can back off a little bit. But the fire danger is extreme, as you noted. And there's a link between the retail, when I'm explaining our retail sales, people who come here for vacation, if you live in Chicago, I'm looking at former Mayor White, you may not realize how big the state of Colorado is. And you turn on the nightly news and you see there's a fire, you might cancel your reservation here in Durango. And we've seen that happen. A couple of years ago, there was a fire in Canyon City and people were canceling here. And the hotels and Dado and others were explaining, well, that's five and a half hours away. And by the way, the wind blows to the east, so that smoke isn't even going to come here. But it's hard, once you see fire in the news, people change their vacation plans. So fire, whether it's local or not, does impact our retail. So we have to make sure we're getting the word out and doing the best we can to say we're open for business.
When do the temporary no-smoking signs, when will they be installed at the trail heads?
They'll be installed this week, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so if you're out hiking and you see someone smoking, maybe they just missed it, feel free to say, hey, there's a smoking ban in the city out of doors. And that's perfectly okay for you to be able to say that. And I hope you all speak up on that one. We're going to go into legislative and policy.
Madam Mayor, did you want to announce this?
I am so sorry. Yes, I will be there. This is law enforcement Memorial River Walk. And it begins this Saturday, May 19th at noon. There is a parade at 11 o'clock on Main Street and a special memorial service at 12 o'clock. At 12:30, the Memorial River Trail Walk will be held. And there'll be a community barbecue at Rotary Park at 1 o'clock. And this is a memorial for all local fallen police officers. So I hope you can join me. I'll be there. And I hope that, I hope I see some of our neighbors and friends in this audience and more, more people at home to join us tomorrow, Saturday, 11 o'clock parade, and then the rec center. And I think we've covered, we have quite a bit to cover tonight. The first is a legislative and policy-related hearing. And city manager, would you look to see if anyone has signed in, please? The city council welcomes all public testimony but requests that it be relevant to the issue at hand. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda, I've asked you to sign in on the form provided. Citizens will be called to the podium by the mayor and address the city council. Comments are limited to three minutes. The manager will signal you with the 30 seconds remaining by raising his hand. The first one, thank you, is a public hearing to consider an ordinance of the city of Durango, Colorado amending Section 17-60 of the Code of Ordinances related to pedestrian safety and access to sidewalks and public rights of way in the downtown business area of the city and regulations declaring an effective date. So who is presenting?
Kimberly has a little.
Presentation by staff first, which is our procedure.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as a synopsis, just to make sure we are all on the same page and know what we are giving comment on this evening, the, you can't see it very well, but the audience can see it and it's up on the screen as well. The dark area here that is highlighted are the boundaries that are proposed in the draft ordinance for the sidewalk safety and accessibility ordinance. The area of application that what is called the downtown business area within the ordinance is from Fifth Street North to 12th Street, the railroad tracks, to Main Street Alley between Second and Main. And then on Second Avenue, it goes from College tonight. So that is this bump out here. So this is the boundary that's incorporated in the ordinance. The sidewalk pedestrian safety and access ordinance covers sitting, kneeling, reclining, or lying down in the downtown business area as prohibited. Sidewalks, streets, alleys, and the railway right-of-way are included in this. The hours of application for the ordinance are proposed as 7:00 a.m. to 2:30 a.m. of the next day. And there are exceptions within the ordinance for medical emergency, disability, sitting on approved benches or furniture, children in strollers, or parade or permitted events. Voluntary compliance will be sought and no enforcement will be made without prior warning and information. The fines that are proposed within the ordinance are, the first offense up to $100 and the second offense up to 200, or all subsequent offenses up to $200. And now we can.
Begin with the public hearing. Okay. Our first speaker is Tamara H-O-I-E-R. Tamara?
Hoyer.
Hoyer, sorry. If you would come to the podium and tell us your name and address and address the council, please.
Do I start timing now? Is this? After your name and address. Oh, thanks, okay. My husband would be surprised if I actually get it in in three minutes. I'm Tamara Hoyer. I live at 450 East Third Avenue. That's a few blocks from here. I walk Main Street all the time, the alleys as well. So I'm pretty familiar with the body count, if you'd like to, this ordinance is directed at, and the safety issues. I think earlier today, we saw something that was really important, which is we all had a certain level of compassion around an experience one of our folks was having about some gun issues. I'd like to touch that right now because I think it's really important that we start looking at the amount of compassion and decency each one of you and hopefully I and the rest of you have about some of the more vulnerable people in our community. I think this particular ordinance is directed at people who are homeless and who have done or may try to panhandle. I think that there's, I'd like us to try to tap into our moral compass about this because we're only as decent as we are in our actions toward the most vulnerable people in our community. And I know very well that many of these people have mental illnesses, they have substance abuse issues. But the problem for us is we don't like to look at them. We want them to go away. Because tourists don't want to look at them. And that's one of the reasons that there's concern in the business community. And I totally understand that. But I don't think that this ordinance addresses that issue. You know, Mr. LeBlanc said earlier about educating the public about shopping local. I think one of the things we have to do is educate the public, including our visitors, that one of the things that's not helpful to all these people is to both treat them badly, but also to give them money, which would encourage their presence in places where there are lots and lots of commercial things going on. We're not having a problem with them in our parks, I assume. Hopefully, we will not move to that problem of having them in our parks. But I'm very concerned that we are not addressing the problem issue, which is some of our visitors and some of our community members with misguided compassion. And I think more education and more local communication and collaboration for helping these individuals and to move them out of the area to perhaps do constructive work. The story I've heard is that some of the shopkeepers have offered them work and they will quit because it's more lucrative to panhandle. Yes, sir.
Thirty seconds.
Sixty seconds? Okay, 30 seconds. I'm asking you to shell this ordinance and to reconsider it and move into something more collaborative. Because I think this is a mean ordinance. And I don't think it's about, I think it's a violation of not public safety, but of human rights. Thank you.
I have, I'm sorry, I should have told you, there's no clapping, there's no applauding after any speaker. I will have to ask you to leave if you persist on that. So this is a public testimony and it's, people speak, they sit down, the next one speaks, they sit down. There is no applauding, there's no emotional, sorry, it doesn't work here. Okay, since we all got the rules straight. The second one is Mike Smedley. Please come to the podium and say your name and address, please, and address the council.
Yes, thank you. Mike Smedley at 3090 East Fourth Avenue in Durango. I'd like to congratulate the council for having the courage to tackle this issue. I don't think it's a human rights issue, I think it's a sidewalk issue and we're limiting it to that very, very scope. You know, every time, there's a tipping point. And my tipping point came in singing with Santa and a pool of urine on the sidewalk. Now, for years prior to that, you know, we've endured a bunch of stuff. I mean, endured, I probably had, I don't know, probably three, four people, you know, called the police and have had people arrested for whatever reason. And most of those reasons are because these people have said the magic word to me. It's two words, it's a two-word phrase, and that word, that phrase is not happy birthday. Let's just say that. I've asked people to move along. Please don't do that. Don't stick your feet out. And what they're doing is they're testing the resolve of people. This is not anything to do with civil rights, it's some folks that are engaging in bad behavior. I've seen it time and time again. I've seen the guy who threatened me physically, so I had him arrested for harassment. I've told people, please, don't do that. I've informed them that, you know, this is not the way to improve their lives. Do they need help? The answer is no. They don't take advantage of any of the things, and I don't want to make it about them. I just don't want to be able to have to trip over folks that are lying or sitting on the sidewalk. I work at a bank. I can't tell you how many customers have asked me, could you please do the heavy lifting on this? They're taking bags of money for deposits and they're seeing, not because they're bad people, but when you're walking with a bag of money on the sidewalk, you want to get your business taken care of. And as more and more people congregate, it gets scary, it gets frightening, it's not safe. And the perception is huge. So it might be educational, but the reality is when you got a bunch of people together, it really, really looks bad. It also didn't happen when I was up at Tim Walsworth's office and we're looking down and we're seeing guys on the sidewalk, starting the game of let's harass the tourists. And we're just going, wow, this really has gotten bad. So let me tell you about the tipping point. That's when we sponsored singing with Santa. And there was a person not on the side, but in the middle of the sidewalk. And I know their names. There's Chris, there's Joy, there's Jeff. I talked to these guys. And it's not being uncompassionate. I don't know, I just don't want them to sit on the sidewalk. But what happened with this one person, they were on the sidewalk. He was singing for Santa. We'd sponsored it to have the glow sticks. They were there and they got combative. And they stood up and, by golly, they had wet themselves. And I'm just going, have this devolved so far that we don't have a tool for law enforcement to do something about this? So all these kids are now having to stand and pee while they're waiting to see Santa or singing with Santa. One of the things that had talked about Salt Lake had a similar problem, they let it go. They let it go a long time until it reached a really, really huge tipping point.
Mr. Smedley.
When they just said, you know, the guy that the former sheriff said, Salt Lake City, it could be Durango, has become the absolute parents with a 40-year-old kid living in the basement.
Mrs. Smedley.
The community gets exactly what it tolerates. Let's not tolerate it.
Thank you, thank you for wrapping it up. The next speaker is Paul Warren. Please address the council and tell us your name and address.
Paul Warren, 2024 Crestview Drive here in Durango. I'm here as a concerned resident of Durango. We're here talking about criminalizing people who are basic human behaviors for sitting down, lying down in certain areas of Durango. Now, the problems that were presented by city council were the following. Obstructing sidewalks, as Mayor Sweetie-Marbury pointed out, we're talking about people with baby strollers, we're talking about seniors negotiating these sidewalks, we're talking about public safety, we're talking about economic vitality. Now, as the city council is well aware, we already have ordinances in place that address these issues. We have ordinances that cover obstructing public streets, places, or buildings. We have ordinances in place that cover assault, battery, intimidation, menacing, reckless endangerment, disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace, and aggressive panhandling. There are already ordinances in place. So what's the real problem? What's the truth? What are we trying to address here? What we're trying to address is that the city council wants to clear out panhandlers. Panhandlers that are not obstructing the sidewalks, panhandlers that are not creating safety risks, and are harmlessly sitting down and lying down out of the way. That is not criminal behavior. That should not be criminalized. This ordinance would target homeless people. It would target panhandlers. I'm sorry, was your hand raised?
No.
And we're not going to be targeting people who are frequently, or going to establishments with chairs. We're not going to target affluent people who are vacationing in Durango with money. Those people are going to get warnings. The people that are going to be targeted are the very people who are asking for our help. Panhandlers, people who are homeless. So what's the problems with this ordinance? Homeless people are going to have criminal records for human behavior, not for obstructing, not creating a safety issue, and not reducing economic vitality here in Durango. They're lawfully exercising their right to panhandle. Now, as Counselor Dick White pointed out, this is going to take enforcement and education. Because homeless people are going to be the ones that are going to be the most susceptible to this ordinance. And what I'm asking today is that the city council consider not enacting this ordinance so quickly. That we take the time to assess the goals of city council, that we look at other solutions through programs or treatment, and that we not criminalize people for basic human behaviors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Danielle Chick. I'm sorry if I said it mispronounced it. Please come to the podium and state your name and address and address the council.
Danielle Chick, 210 East 36th Street here in Durango. I've heard several things mentioned tonight, a lot having to do with compassion, sales tax, retail sales, shopping local, encouraging activity. I'm getting ready to celebrate six years in business here in Durango, and I can tell you that it's not easy. We can kind of see everybody, like the doors are closing all over the place. People come in and they come out. You know, getting people to shop downtown in Durango is a feat in and of itself. Getting them to walk in your doors and spend their money is. Getting them to walk in your doors and spend their money is a whole nother mountain to climb. What we're talking about is complicated, obviously, but I am compassionate, hardworking, generous, we give to the community all the time. And I don't think that we're necessarily talking about the people that are just sitting or standing or quietly panhandling. I think we're talking about the people that are interrupting daily business, that are making it hard for community members, the tourists, to come downtown and feel comfortable and want to spend their money with us. I can tell you, I mean, I go to work probably seven days a week, and I can tell you that there are good days of business and bad days of business, and a lot of it is affected by the atmosphere in our streets. It's not a coincidence, having people sitting and standing and asking for things in an intimidating way is what we're talking about. We're not talking about, I think, the people sitting there quietly that need help. I think all of us agree that people that need help, we would be willing to help.
But I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you. The next speaker is Tim Walsworth.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Tim Walsworth, Executive Director of the Durango Business Improvement District, or the BID. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. Jack Llewellyn wanted to come, he had a family emergency, and so he asked me to let you all know I'm speaking for him as well. So BID in the chamber, we both support the proposed sidewalk safety and accessibility ordinance. When a person chooses to sit or lie down on the sidewalks in downtown, they are creating a dangerous situation for pedestrians. Downtown Durango is crowded at most times, and when people cannot pass without going into the street, or when they have to step over someone, we believe this is an unnecessary hazard. BID in the chamber, we both believe that people have a right to rest, and we would note to the council that there are benches within one or two blocks of every block of Main Avenue. I think it's important to note that this proposed ordinance does not make it illegal for anyone to be in downtown. It merely states that sitting or lying down on the sidewalks is no longer appropriate. Lastly, I want to state on the record many of the things that have been done and that are being done to address root causes of homelessness, lest anyone think that this is the only action being taken. I will tell you that BID played a leading role in the Durango Homeless Coalition and in the Durango Homeless Summit. BID created the Make It Count campaign, which asked people to donate to charities and not to panhandlers. About 4,000 people have heeded that message, and 100% of those donations go to local charities. BID supported efforts by the Community Compassion Outreach Program to create jobs for the homeless. And we helped create multiple jobs to get that program going. BID also hired a homeless outreach coordinator in the summer of 2015 and 20, I'm sorry, 2016 and 2017, excuse me, and the person we hired just so happened to be homeless. The police have created crisis intervention teams, which are very effective in helping people. The city and the county are working on creating a homeless coordinator position to bring services together. The city and the county support local service providers with hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to provide services. And in my opinion, best of all, there's a permanent supportive housing program that's being looked at, and I believe it's in the works, and there's serious momentum towards it. That uses the Housing First model, which is very effective in getting to the root cause of poverty and homelessness. So BID in the chamber asks the council, please, pass this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Erica Curly.
Good evening, councilors. Erica Curly, 2201 Main Avenue. I support this ordinance. This is the third time I've stood at this podium to say so. I do think this is the right thing, it's the right direction. I ditto everything that Tim just said. I think it is the right thing for the safety, for the accessibility, and for, above all, it preserves the level of professionalism, which is integral to the success of our small businesses, which create a number of jobs for, within our community, and also then adds to the economic vitality of the town as a whole. And I would just like to thank you, councilors, and also staff for your very hard work in bringing this ordinance forward on the agenda very swiftly. And I know that all the issues sort of surrounding this have been very difficult, and I praise you for your hard work and your hard efforts, and I would certainly support you in passing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ted Hermison.
Good evening. I'm Ted Hermison. I live at 2633 County Road 204 here in Durango. I am a business owner of multiple businesses and properties in Durango. I know, maybe you've noticed tonight, there were some people standing outside with a right-to-rest sign. I agree with that 100%, but it is not on the sidewalks. Sidewalks are there to be walked on as a way of transportation, no different than roads are to be driven on. And I think that unfortunately, when people lay down on the sidewalk or sit on the sidewalk, they are a hazard, no different than someone, unfortunately, in Durango has already found out, a dog bowl is a hazard when it comes to sidewalks. So I support this completely. I think the sidewalks are definitely made for transportation, which means for walking, not laying down, not sleeping on them, not sitting on them. There are benches, there are parks all around our town that we spent a lot of money for to accommodate people that want to have a right to rest, and I think that's what should be done. And I do think that it is not a political or an agenda or a level of financial capacity for these people not to be down there. It has to do with safety only for what's going on with the sidewalks, because they are made for transportation. We, as owners of properties downtown and that, we are required to maintain these properties, these sidewalks. We have to shovel the snow and that. It's not because people come and sit on the sidewalks, it's because people are using them to walk and for transportation. So I support this completely, and I wish that the city council does that also. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lynn Schaller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors. My name is Lynn Schaller. I live and work at 1099 Main Avenue, number 409. I am a business owner downtown. I was disappointed to see in your warehouse clauses of the ordinance that you only mentioned the BID supporters of the ordinance, but failed to mention the 42 constituents that I spoke for on the listening meeting a couple of weeks ago from the Indivisible Civil Rights Committee, and all the other people who opposed the ordinance. The proposed finding in this ordinance that it's not about bad behavior that some people spoke of defies the vast majority of the comments that were made at the listening session and by the members that we've heard from primarily here today, as well as the press that has been held on this issue in the past one to two years. It's also contradicted by the ordinance language itself, referring to increased concerns over safety and conflicts with those who sit, creating a sense of hazard and disorder. So that language is based on stereotypes, assuming that the people who are sidewalk sitters are bad people who cause problems. The concerns about congestion are overstated. The ban is from 7:00 in the morning till 2:30 in the afternoon every single day, and I would contend that there's no congestion of foot traffic with baby strollers and wheelchairs at 7:00 in the morning or after 8:00 PM. After that period of time, there is not congestion. Including the alleys in the ordinance, due to train traffic is also overbroad. The train does not run at 7:00 AM, nor does it run after whatever, 6:00 or 7:00, when the last train comes in. The stated rationale to keep the ban open to 2:30 in the morning was to protect bar and restaurant workers, but except for Friday and Saturday, most bars and restaurants close at 10:00. And maybe their staff cleans up after that, but it doesn't need to be as broad as to 2:30 in the morning with the possibility of Friday and Saturday nights. What's not addressed in the ordinance, something I photographed today, I have pictures, if I can distribute those, I don't know if I'm allowed to do that, but it's large vehicles that are impeding the sidewalk from baby strollers and wheelchairs. If they have those big giant trucks with the big hinges on front, or snowplows, I've seen the snowplows go all the way up to the meters, that is impeding traffic. So I think that's something, if you're wanting to pass this, you need to consider. Prohibiting those who sit will, or lie on the sidewalk, will just stand. If they don't stand, they're going to sit in somebody else's neighborhood. So that's not solving anything. And by charging them a fine of $100 to $200, not only will criminalize poverty, but will take up law enforcement time and clog up the courts where they will have to be housed, fed, and given medicine. So I ask that you either not pass this ordinance or table it until the county hires this homeless consultant and we can really craft some useful solutions, put some real facts to paper, and address these societal issues that every city our size and larger has, rather than putting a ban down on it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Richard Butler. I'm sorry, carry it. Butler?
Butler.
All right, thank you. That's all right, thank you. Please state your name and address for the council.
I'm Richard Butler. I live at 61 Rosetta Circle. I've lived there for almost three years. Thank you for the opportunity to address your proposed ordinance. My wife and I have been visitors to Durango for the past 30 years as tourists, as parents of two students at Fort Lewis College, and now as permanent residents. We have over 70 combined years of working with low-income and other marginalized populations in various social employments in the cities in Colorado, Minnesota, Pennsylvania, and Kentucky. I appreciate that you have put a great deal of work into seeking solutions to the safety of our citizens, businesses, and visiting tourists. But we must recognize that Durango of today will never be the Durango of five, 10, or 20 years ago. We now experience the problems of all the big cities. I respectfully request that you, the city council members, direct your efforts and our city funds to solutions that address the issues of hunger, public safety, economic security, affordable housing, and mental health for homeless, the needy, and low-income citizens of Durango, indeed, for all our citizens of Durango. I urge you to increase the collaboration with the business community, the county, our social services organizations, faith groups, law enforcement groups, and other community groups and citizens, in seeking creative solutions that show how Durango cares for all our citizens, our city's culture, and our community life. Please do not pass this ordinance without committing to seek a broader set of solutions. This ordinance will inevitably lead to police and citizen conflicts, most surely to increase the cost for jails, police, courts, and the probation department, and of course, the city's budget. It will increase public safety in marginal amounts. Let's use our funds more skillfully for realistic solutions. I have watched the efforts of the cities of Boulder and Denver as they have addressed these same issues with success, with some success, while avoiding criminalizing the victims of poverty, substance addiction, and homelessness. Let us do better by raising the level of our response to these problems with creative, respectful, and reasonable solutions for the needs of all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tanya Clegg.
Hi. Tanya Clegg, 168 Chapman Lane. I've lived in Durango for 15 years. I have a family, I have an eight-year-old son, and I love our town, and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. But it saddens me when I'm walking downtown with him, and he doesn't feel safe, and he doesn't want to go on certain areas because there is congestion. And when I am walking by myself, doing business, and see other tourists getting harassed, and they don't know what to do, and they walk by, and I feel that our sidewalks need to be right-of-way for those that are shopping in our town so that they can safely pass and enjoy our historic downtown. And this ordinance, I agree with it, I appreciate the time that the council has put into it, and I feel that this will really help our downtown in keeping it safe. I have witnessed many strollers and other people trying to get by and having to go around folks that are on the sidewalk and having to go out into the street to do so. And so I feel that with passing this, it'll keep our sidewalks much safer. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Linda Daniel.
Hi. My name's Linda Daniel. I live at 1072 County Road 214 in Durango. I've been here for 16 years. And I'm a nurse, and I know how to put on Band-Aids. I do it really well, and if any of you get injured, I'll be happy to help you. I think this is a Band-Aid. I think this ordinance is going to merely cover a wound that is festering in our city. And I think it's something that needs to be looked at very carefully from a proactive, not a reactive stance. Antigens is neither acquired nor is it desired, and it needs to be taken care of by a city the size of Durango. And it doesn't need another Band-Aid. It actually needs to be cured, and we're not doing a very good job of that right now. I think we're merely putting on a Band-Aid that is going to make it go away for a little while, but it will not, it will not make it go away. We're always going to have poverty, and we're always going to have antigens. And we always have antigens who have the rights to safety. They have as much right to safety as anyone else. I have to tell you, I feel a little less safe on the streets when I see a skateboarder coming, zooming down, or some big dog, or a large person on a bicycle. Those things are just as safety hazard as someone sitting in the street. And as far as I can tell from this testimony and from others that I've been to, I haven't heard one person say that they've actually tripped over someone in the street. I've only heard them saying they're a nuisance, and that I can't get my buggy around this person who's got their feet standing out there in the sidewalk. To me, safety is not an issue that we need to take lightly, and the people who are indigent have just as big concerns around safety as anyone else. And we need to protect them as well as protect everyone else who walks down the streets of Durango. Thank you for your time.
Bill Tripp? Did you sign up for this, Bill Tripp?
No, I actually have work. I'm the general.
Okay, thank you. And that, I assume that's Jill Tripp also?
Same.
All right, I'm just removing your name. Thank you. Let's see, let me cover. Councilor White said Barbara Noseworthy.
I'm too busy to sign in. The first time I come to a meeting.
Ms. Noseworthy, please, state your name and address and address the council.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Noseworthy. I live at 1099 Main Avenue, number 401. And I walk the streets of Main Avenue every day, and the Riverside Park, because I live downtown. And I have expressed my concern to several council members about the homelessness situation here in Durango. And I will mirror what the nurse just said. I believe this ordinance is a Band-Aid, that it is not addressing the root causes here. And I think while it is unpleasant to look at poverty and to look at despair, I think we have to, to look at it. And I think we have to work together as a community to find a solution. And I believe that criminalizing poverty or antigens will not solve anything. I think it will tie up our police officers, I think it will tie up our courts, and I think that we'll still have the same issue. And it's an issue across America. And so I'd like to challenge the city council and this community and the faith-based organizations and the NGOs to work together to address the root causes of this issue. And at a minimum, I would ask that you delay your vote on this and wait to actually see if there's a solution that can address the larger issue, rather than this, this step. So thank you. And I thank you for your service and for your concern, because I think that there's not a council member that I've spoken with who isn't concerned about the issue of homelessness in this community and in poverty in this community. So thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the public testimony. I'm going to close it now, and I will open with questions by the council, either for staff or comments.
I had one question.
I had one question from the city attorney. One of the assertions was made that this ordinance doesn't do any more than the existing ordinance that prohibits blocking the sidewalk.
Well, it does, there are differences. The council passed a aggressive panhandling ordinance a couple of years ago. That ordinance does contain provisions that allow for enforcement of panhandling that occurs in a manner that obstructs the sidewalk. But this ordinance really doesn't have anything to do with panhandling at all. This has to do with just someone who happens to be sitting down on the sidewalk, lying down on the sidewalk. So there's really no correlation between the two activities. So one of the findings, I think, that is contained in the ordinance is that it really isn't related to those kind of activities. I think it addresses a completely separate issue. Hope that answers your question.
Any other questions from council?
Just one quick question, Dirk. The way I was reading the ordinance relative to some of the public statements about criminalizing homelessness was that for anyone, whether they were homeless or panhandling or just an average citizen sitting down or lying down on the sidewalk, the police force would be asked to, ask that person to stop that behavior first, and then the ticket issuance would only come with a refusal to stop the behavior. Is that, did I read that right?
That's the intent, yes. And that's how it's drafted. And that's the guidance, the staff guidance and council, you know, that we wanted to seek voluntary compliance before any kind of enforcement action would occur. So this specifically contains a provision that requires that the police do that.
And then there was also some language in there, I thought, that referenced the potential of these fines not being onerous and additionally burdensome in there as well.
The intent is the fine is up to $200, or in the course discretion, you know, another penalty. So those were intended to be maximums, not the place that you would go automatically, and the municipal court judge would have discretion to impose a much lesser fine or other creative methods of enforcing.
I'm sorry for that disruption. You were saying, what else?
I think the intent is, like most of the ordinances, well, like practically all of the ordinances in the city, the municipal judge is the final determiner of the factual circumstances and what the appropriate penalty might be in the individual circumstances.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a related question concerning voluntary compliance. I think it's fairly, you know, the obvious first step is to say, look, you know, you can't be sitting on the sidewalk. What happens if a few days later, the same individual is engaging in a similar behavior?
I think in that case, the intent of the ordinance is that they be asked nicely again, please don't do that. I think at some point, it's clear that someone's doing it on, you know, purposely ignoring the ordinance. I think that would be up to the police in terms of enforcement decisions, but particularly in the beginning, I think it's imperative that we try to take an approach where it's educational and not just punitive. So I think that, the answer to that question is, I think that would be up to the individual officer. You know, if you've asked somebody to not do that, you come back an hour later, they're still doing it, then clearly, you know, I think that they've been informed. A day or two later, well, you know, I think it's incumbent on the police officers at that point to kindly ask them to, you know, to comply with the law again.
This is a section for questions. Any more questions from council? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and now we're going to have a discussion by the council.
I would point out that, as council knows, there is a draft ordinance in the packet that is on the agenda for, you know, potential consideration by council later. That was drafted based on the best information that we obtained from council after the study session that was held on this issue. So this is not cast in concrete. If council wants to suggest changes or alter that in any way, that's a possibility later on before first reading.
Okay. Comments from the city council? Thoughts?
If I read correctly, we're going to have another several times to talk.
Later tonight?
Well, later tonight or in future sessions. So I think I'll withhold my comments till their time.
Okay. Councilor White?
I think it's, you know, it's possible that we will have a discussion toward the end of the meeting. We've got six more hearings that are surely going to take at least another hour, an hour and a half. There are many, it strikes me that most people are here tonight for this, concerning this particular issue. I sympathize with everything that's been said on both sides. Is this a Band-Aid? Very possibly. Are we working on larger issues? We are. But one of the, I think between the lines, you know, if people read between the lines that we're criminalizing homelessness, I think we're also reading between the line that government is supposed to fix it. And as several speakers have noted, that's not going to happen. This is a community-wide issue. Thursday evening, we're having a public meeting to talk about priorities for how the city spends its general funds money. Law enforcement is one of them. The community support to, of the agencies, which I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we do give to community support agencies to assist needy individuals in our community. There was a handout that I had to look for in my files today. There's a whole page of things that we already do. We are working with La Plata County to hire a, to develop, well, to contract for a strategic plan that would equip the, a future homeless services coordinator with a framework for operations. We're doing all of those things. The permanent supportive housing effort is going forward. I believe Housing Solutions has a June 1 deadline for submitting that grant. It includes a commitment from the city council to lease the property to the south of the soup kitchen and adjacent, by actually partly the same property that Housing Solutions now operates on. We're doing a lot. But one could argue that everything that we're doing represents Band-Aids in the face of the challenge of homelessness. It is going to take community-wide efforts on a scale we have not experienced. It's not just going to be donating to the soup kitchen or to Housing Solutions. It's going to include volunteering with your faith group to see if they can house a few more people, to maybe donate for the purchase of a property that could be allocated for homeless people. The city doesn't have the money to do that. La Plata County doesn't have the money to do that. There is grant money that may be available, but it's got to be a match. There's usually comes with matches. This is an incredibly difficult challenge. The, and I think that the city attorney has done a very careful job of framing this so that it really is addressing behavior, and we've heard talking about people's behavior. People can stand with a sign on Main Avenue all day long, and they are absolutely within their First Amendment rights if they're not blocking the entrance to one of the storefronts. And that, people can go to the parks and sleep all day. That's lethal behavior, as long as it's not in the middle of the road. And so there are options. And the bad behavior by some people downtown has impacted the economic vitality of the central business district. And I heard people years ago, some years ago since I've been on council, saying, well, you know, downtown Durango survived Walmart. It's very, very robust. And I heard somebody else say, you cannot take that for granted. If we don't have a robust downtown central business district, the economic health of the entire community and the city government are at risk. I don't expect that this ordinance would be a silver bullet, but I expect to vote for it.
Councilor Bateen?
Well, I would just echo some of the things that Councilor White mentioned relative to our city council and the city government not being able to solve the issues that were greatly part of the public testimony here. We certainly have made great efforts relative to homelessness issues in our community, but I actually don't see this issue as relevant to that. There was a lot of public testimony about it, and I appreciate that, and it certainly was heard, and I'm glad Councilor White mentioned several of the things that we're doing. But this ordinance, if you read it, it very much deals with the safety issues relevant to the busiest part of our downtown corridor, and we expect that those safety issues will improve the right-of-way that is congested at many times of the year. And that was the purpose and intent of the entire ordinance, and I support that. The right to panhandle is a protected First Amendment right, a speech. We're not going to infringe upon that at all. The right to rest is a well-protected constitutional right. It's been thoroughly adjudicated in the courts, and this council has made two very large steps to protect that right in our city. But this step is relevant to the safety issues that concern us in our busiest corridor of the city. This ordinance will not discriminate, it must not discriminate, and our police chief is here tonight. He would be the first person to tell you that. When we first considered this issue, he was very clear that this ordinance would apply to any citizen anywhere in our community that was in this area, and that's how it will apply, that's what it's written to do.
Mayor Proton?
I also appreciate Councilor White's comments, sympathizing with the individuals who might be impacted by this ordinance. I do, I very much am in favor of policies that look to stabilize and mobilize homelessness up and out of homelessness. However, in this case, I do think that the, in our town is unique, and we do have narrow streets, and we have a very crowded downtown, and unimpaired and safe passage for citizens to protect commerce is important, and I lean towards support.
Well, I certainly have heard the councilors and listened to the testimony of people who talk about making the solution better, and certainly, as Councilor White said, that is, that's something that city government can't cure that by themselves, that takes partnerships. And so we're looking forward to more partnerships with the faith-based community or the other nonprofits. But I go back to public safety. I think the ordinance is very clear. I heard the child who's afraid to go downtown. That doesn't feel good to me as a grandparent. I have certainly walked around people downtown who've been sitting, and believe me, at night, it's harder to see people on the streets around dusk area. So I support this, and for all the ordinance, I think is well-written, and we will be talking about that a little bit later on. So I'm going to look for a recommendation. And this is a little, the documentation, if you'll look, councilors. We've had our public hearing and public testimony. It's closed.
Is there a motion to consider the proposed ordinance for first reading?
I would make a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the next city council meeting, amending Section 23-71 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for the purpose of making that section consistent with the ballot language approved.
That's true.
I don't have the right one. I'm not used to paper.
Okay, I know it's tough. What is?
Yeah, I'm going to number for me, and I'll do it again.
There's really not any, I mean, again, this is already agendized for first reading, so.
So we're looking, going for another reading. Okay, then, city attorney, do I need to do anything with this?
Not really. I think that if you wanted to conduct the hearing, then, you know, it is for consideration later in the agenda. So I suggest that because it's agendized that way, that we wait to have an introduction of ordinances later in the agenda, and I think that's all you need to do.
My apologies.
We do plan to read the ordinance at that time and kind of have a further discussion about it.
All right, then I'm going to move on to the next legislative public hearing to consider an ordinance granting an easement on a portion of city-owned property to La Plata Law Association for a new power line to serve the proposed hotel at 1111 Camino. That's been continued, so I need a motion to continue it?
Yes.
I'm looking for a motion to continue 9.1.2. And a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Yussit?
Yes.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor Brooke?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. 9.1.3 is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Section 2371 of the Code of the City of Durango to make that section consistent with the ballot language approved by voters, extending the 1/2 cent sales tax. Was there anyone signed up?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we're going to continue this by, there's no public testimony. Staff, report, please.
I'll give you a quick report, Madam Mayor. Julie Brown, the finance director, noticed recently that the, when we had approved the 2015 extension of the sales tax, there were, as you may recall, there were some additional items that could be funded from that tax. And when the original tax was adopted in 1999, there was an ordinance that was created that set up a special fund that had a name and indicated those purposes. Julie's actually discovered that that section of the code had inadvertently not been updated at the same time, so she's requesting that that be done, and so that's the purpose of this.
Hearing?
This hearing and this ordinance would just be to bring those two into consistency.
There's no one signed up for public testimony, so I'm going to close that section. Are there questions by council? No questions. The public hearing is closed, so I'll look for a motion, please.
A move that we direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the next city council meeting, amending Section 23-71 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for the purpose of making this section consistent with the ballot language approved by voters in 2015, extending the 1999 1/2 cent sales tax.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Brooke?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Yussit?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving on to a quasi-judicial hearing. This is for a public hearing to consider the Newfield Preliminary Subdivision and Variance, and I will ask for the staff to present, please.
Is the remote, Mark, is her remote?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mark Williams. Community Development Department. It should be a relatively straightforward hearing. It's for a subdivision and a variance. This is for 1410 Gigline Gulch. This lot is located near the entrance into the Hillcrest neighborhood, which is right here. This is the Hillcrest Golf Course, and this is the entrance into Sky Ridge. This is Zone EN6. It's about, almost half an acre roughly, actually, I think it's slightly over half an acre. The applicant is asking to subdivide the lot into two lots to build two single-family homes.
homes as opposed to what he could do right now, which is build one single-family home. In EN6, the minimum lot size is eight and a half thousand square feet. Both of the new lots would be over 11,000 square feet. And the variance that he's asking for is, has to do with the lot width. In the EN6 zone, the minimum lot width is 75 feet. This lot exceeds that considerably in the front even after it's subdivided. These two lots would have over 100 feet of frontage. But as the lot goes to the east, it tapers, and then approximately midpoint of the lot, they get to be less than 75 square feet. And then, at the far end, they're around 50 feet wide. The applicant has a couple of building envelopes, which shows that the buildings would be pushed closer to the front to Gigeline. And part of that's because there's topography here, the lot's sloped up, and so, go this way. So, these houses are roughly 70 feet. The building envelopes are about 70 feet from the rear property line, which is far in excess of what the minimum of 40 feet is for a rear setback. So, as I said, this is a minor subdivision review and variance. For the minor subdivision, the city looks at items like, is it going to be parked? Will they have trash and recycling? How does the access work? Will they have property, proper utilities? The answer to all those is yes. One thing that's a little unusual for this lot is the city's not requiring sidewalks or street trees or curb and gutter. That's because these lots are already built out. There's no sidewalk here, so there's no anticipated chance to ever connect a sidewalk from here to here. And then, here, there's no sidewalk for well over a mile. The Planning Commission heard this at its last meeting and approved both requests for the subdivision and for the variance in the opinion of the Planning Commission. The application met the conditions of the seven variance criteria, which I won't read. We can discuss those if you'd like to discuss any one of those individually. Whenever there's a variance, we ask that findings be made to justify the variance because it's important to make variances as tailor-made as possible to the site so their application is not widespread. So, the findings that Planning Commission had were that the lot size substantially exceeds the minimum lot size in the EN6 zone. The lot's access Gigeline Gulch Road, not Hillcrest, so that reduces any potential impact to the Hillcrest Estates neighborhood. One of the things that we required before the city staff would support the variance was that the neighbors themselves would need to support the variance. So, the Hillcrest Estates Architectural Review Committee wrote a letter in support of the variance. And three of the four neighbors who live directly around the applicant also support the variance. And then, a classic reason for supporting any variance, well, there's two reasons. Topography and irregular shape. This one's affected by the irregular shape. So, the commission approved the five-nothing with the findings. We did get one letter of concern, but not exactly of opposition from a neighbor. And these neighbors were asking that the houses not be built beyond the point to where the lot narrows down to 75 square feet. I think that because the lots are, or the envelopes are around 70 feet from the rear of the property, that would substantially address their concerns. And if we shrink the building envelope, they're already pushed so far up front, I think that might impact the ability to build something on there, but I think at 70 feet, that's, it's pretty far. It's also, there's a pretty big drop in the topography. The back of the building envelopes are around 17 feet from the, 17 feet, and then, the rear of the lot is another 17 feet. And then, the houses are still a little bit higher. They're also asking that we don't grant a height variance, and we have in the past said as a condition for a subdivision that you can't do any variances at all. Obviously, doing a variance here, I think that's reasonable. I don't anticipate that the applicant's going to ask for variance, but the height limit in that zone is pretty generous, so I don't think there would be a problem from the staff's perspective if that was a condition. There are two motions that are required. The first is for the variance, the second is for the subdivision. The variance could not happen without, I'm sorry, the subdivision could not happen without the variance, so the way the agenda documentation is written is to act on variance request first, if that passes, then to act on the subdivision. And that is the staff recommendation, which is to approve both variance and the subdivision.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to say anything? This is your opportunity to address council.
Chad Newfeld, 14 Augustine Court. So, the, we aren't requiring any height variance. We have no interest in that. Will, even if we were to build further, or in an area where it was narrower than 75 feet wide, we still would not encroach on the normal setbacks. So, it wouldn't affect how a neighbor would see the house, I guess. And I've now spoken with all the neighbors. I hadn't heard about this last, these last concerns, but I've spoken with the fourth neighbor and addressed all their concerns, so I've been in touch with everyone. And I'm just here to answer a question if you guys have concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open this up for public testimony. Was there anyone, city manager, who came to speak on this?
No, ma'am.
All right, I'm going to close public testimony. Are there any questions by council for staff?
I guess one detailed question. Mark, you just, you described the increase in elevation as you go toward the back of the lot. And I was just wondering, does that get into our 30-degree slope constraint? Or is there wiggle room on that?
No, the steepest part of the lot, it's the rear half where they're not building up front. It's, it's not quite as steep. The very entrance to the front, they're going to have to do a little grating to get their driveway in. Because it's a shared driveway, it's got to be a little bit less steep than an individual driveway. And we can account for that by adding a little bit of room to make the grade, but generally, it's not, it's not impacting the steepest slopes on the site.
Any other questions from council? No, sir. Okay, well, at this point then, I'm going to close, I think I did close the public testimony. Did the applicant have anything else to say? This is your last opportunity. Since there's none, I'm closing the public hearing, and I will look for a discussion or a motion from council.
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Newville Property variance request firstly, and to create two lots with less than 75 width, feet in width in the EN6 zone.
I'll need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. The next public hearing is to consider the Tech Office condominiums.
We, we have more under motion. So, I'll follow up my first motion with the second motion, which is to approve the, a motion to approve the Newville Preliminary Plan Minor Subdivision. Direct the applicant to prepare the final plan and milers, and authorize the mayor to sign the final plan milers once all necessary provisions are made.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Okay, now, we're moving on to a public hearing to consider the Tech Office condominiums preliminary plot. We need a sense of humor when we're on city council.
It's tough with the paper.
You stay on your toes.
It does. Thank you.
I know, we got, finally get used to this.
I'm losing it, yeah.
I know.
I don't know how to use paper for 20 years.
That is so loud.
Okay, that's where we are now, the tech, well, Mr. Roser. We're sorting paper, Mr. Roser.
Okay, this is a, I think, an even simpler subdivision proposal. This is a proposal to create a condominium situation so that each of the four existing office units at the existing office building at 135 Permet Drive in the Tech Center can be conveyed and owned individually. This is a minor subdivision under the OUC. It requires preliminary plan review by both the city council and planning commission in public hearing process, and then, the final plan review will be done at the staff level, and the plat log will be taken care of. The planning commission considered this at their April 23 meeting. There was no public comment, and the commission voted 5-0 to recommend approval, subject to the conditions recommended in the staff report. That basically is just some minor corrections to the, to the plating. There's no physical impact to the city in association with this condominium proposal. There's no real, as I say, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is the recommendation of the planning commission and staff that the council by motion approve the Tech Center Office condominiums preliminary plot, authorize the mayor to sign the final plan milers upon completion of all the final plating requirements as determined by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. I'm going to open up the public testimony. Anyone here, city manager, to testify?
No, ma'am.
With that, I'll close the public testimony. Are there any questions by city council?
No.
With seeing no, no questions, and I think we're moving along, I'm going to close the public hearing and look for a motion by council.
Make a motion to approve the Tech Office condominiums preliminary plot and authorize the mayor to sign the final plot milers upon completion of all plat requirements as determined by staff.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
He stepped out. Keep going.
Counselor White?
Yes.
And Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And we're going to go on to a public hearing to consider the South Fork Storage Character District Plan and Plan Development Amendments.
Thank you.
Consider a future land use map.
That's what I've got, that's what I've got here. I've got nine point two point four.
Three.
We're on three.
We're on three. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so ahead of myself. This is the Tripp Durango District Plan Map Amendment. They've, they've been waiting so patiently. All right, let's go.
Thank you. This is a public hearing to consider a request from William and Jill Tripp to amend the city's comprehensive plan future land use map for a .75 acre parcel located at 29010 US Highway 160 East. The Tripp property is currently designated on the future land use map as residential single-family, and they are asking, or proposing to designate it mixed-use, which allows a density range from 5 to 24 acres and neighborhood commercial-type businesses. So, I have a map here showing the location. So, this is Three Springs Boulevard, City of Durango, Three Springs property. These are the jug handles that were put in, and their property is this corner property right here. This is an aerial that shows the property. This is what the property looks like. There are houses to the west and south, and the property, and a property directly east of the house is vacant, and then, the property northeast on the same parcel does have a single-family house. The rest of the property is vacant. And this property is for sale right now and will probably be changing use sometime in the near future. Comprehensive plan shows you that the red is all the commercial properties that kind of surround the property. Yellow is the residential single-family. This is medium density, and this is mixed-use over in this area. So, the applicants do believe that the mixed-use sort of gives a nice balance between the commercial that's directly available to their property. Well, there was one other thing I wanted to point out. Let me just jump back. The other thing is that this property does have right-of-way on three sides. They have their service road, the frontage road here, they have roads here, and this is a platted road that will happen in the future. So, the only property that actually touches them is commercially designated. So, there is review criteria in the code about what you do for comprehensive plan amendments. It talks about compatibility with the adjacent future, existing and future planned uses. Adequate public utilities, facilities, and services warranted by changing conditions in the area, the, whether it meets currently unaddressed need, and then, whether there's enough adequate supply of land left in that category. And the staff reviewed all these and feel that it meets all the criteria. I do want to also point out that city water is about 200 feet from this property, so any redevelopment, they would hook on to city water and probably annex if they're, if they're eligible at the time. So, in summary, the future land use map is used as a guide to the types of uses which may be appropriate for development. The change, we believe, is compatible with the residential homes as well as the commercial property. And the use of the property as mixed-use does allow for more intensive use, but also functions as a buffer between the future commercial development and the existing single-family. So, the planning commission and the Durango Planning Commission and the La Plata County Planning Commission met in joint session, because this is in the joint planning area, in April. There was no public comment. We also had a neighborhood meeting, and there was no public comment. The Durango Planning Commission voted 4-0 to approve, to recommend approval of the future land use map amendment, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and the county planning commission voted 5-0 to approve the request. You do have attachments to staff report, including, to the agenda document, including the staff report in the minutes. There is no physical impact associated with this request. It is the staff's opinion that the staffs meet the criteria of the comprehensive plan. And so, it is a recommendation, that is recommendation the planning commission and that city council by motion approve the Tripp comprehensive plan amendment with findings that the amendment is consistent with adopted policies and standards.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to say anything?
I'm not sure there's anything I can add.
Okay. Then I'm going to, now, all right, thank you, sir, Mr. Tripp. Is there, was there, is anyone signed up?
No, ma'am.
No, I'm going to close the public testimony and open it up for questions from the council for the staff.
I have no questions, just a comment that, you know, given the configuration of that property with the new frontage road, it makes total sense to allow mixed-use on that property.
Any other comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Let me close the public hearing first, okay? I'm, close the public hearing now, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map to designate the Tripp property at 29010 US Highway 160 East as mixed-use with findings that the amendment is consistent with adopted policies and standards.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes, now, we're on to a public hearing to consider the South Fork Storage Character District Plan and Plan Development Amendments. I just wanted to thank Mr. and Mrs. Tripp for your patience.
All right, no problem.
All right, and, all right, would the staff please present?
Okay, this is a public hearing to consider possible amendments to expand the allowable uses on what is known as Lot Four of the Crater subdivision, which is located at 2848, 28481 Highway 160 East. This is the South Fork mini-storage property that previously was owned by Roxanne Crater, Rowan Crater. This property is Zone PD, Plan Development, as is all of the Crater property and the Crater subdivision out there. It is also covered by the South Fork Character District Master Plan. As part of that plan and the PD documentation, the only use that was identified as allowable on this property was the mini-storage operation. And the reason for that is because of the generally low traffic generation from a mini-storage type operation. CDOT had concerns about the direct access to the highway that this property has, all the other properties in the Grand View area take access off of internal street systems or off of Wilson and Vols Road. They were comfortable with the types of traffic generation that a mini-storage operation would have, even an expanded mini-storage operation. And at the time, we went through the annexation in the Crater subdivision and the PD. That is the use that the prior owner of the property wanted to have. I think you guys are familiar, about a year ago, we did a national expansion approval of the mini-storage operation to put more units on the western portion of the property. Subsequent to that, the property has changed hands, and the current owner, Greg Martin, does not want to expand the mini-storage operation. Instead, his intent is to subdivide the property to create two lots, the westernmost being the vacant parcel right now, that he would like to market and be able to market for certain other uses other than mini-storage. Because this is what's limit, the limitation in the PD agreement and the master plan, this has to go through a plan amendment in order to do that. After discussions with, with staff After discussions with staff, we came up with a, and with CDOT, we came up with a list of uses that we're comfortable with allowing to potentially go onto the property, subject to some limitations that will work out with the developers, part of the PD and plan documents, that will limit the square footage so that the overall traffic that will be generated from the additional use on the property would not be any more than what would be generated by the expanded mini storage operation. The kinds of uses that we feel comfortable with and is what we recommend of the Planning Commission include the expansion of the mini storage, but also enclosed RV storage with no outside RV storage, office and warehouse type uses without outside storage, general office use, including either single tenant or government offices, and medical offices as long as they're limited to a single practitioner, not a clinic or a multiple physician, kind of a situation that we felt might generate too much traffic. There were some other uses that the applicant sought to have approved for that, but at the staff level, we thought that they were more appropriately located where there's an internal road system rather than having direct access on to the highway. The Planning Commission felt the same way. The applicant's representative Nancy Laurel with Russell Engineering was at the Planning Commission meeting and she indicated acceptance of the types of uses recommended by staff and openly recommended by the Planning Commission. Nancy's here tonight, it's my understanding they still are in agreement with the types of uses that we've recommended. The Planning Commission heard this at their April 23 meeting, there was no public comment or testimony other than staff and the applicant, and the commission voted five zero to recommend approval of expanding the uses to those listed in your staff report or in your agenda documentation, and we'll work that out as part of the agreement. There's no physical or budgetary impact associated with this request. The uses that we've identified as being acceptable are consistent with comprehensive plan designation and the Planning Commission is recommending that the council by motion approve these amendments to the South Fork Character District Master Plan and the Crater PD to allow additional uses on Lot Four of the Crater subdivision to include those uses recommended by the Planning Commission. City staff is reflected in the Planning Commission minutes of April 23 and direct the city staff to amend the actual character district master plan and PD documentation to reflect these additional units. Pretty simple and straightforward, as I said, the applicant is here and his representative is here.
I'm going to open the public hearing, would the applicant like to add anything at this time?
No, I concur with staff's findings.
Okay, I'm going to open up for public testimony, was there any?
No ma'am.
No, I'm going to close the public testimony. Now, questions by council for staff?
Seeing, I was just going to confirm that the, in discussion with CDOT, there's no improvements required for the intersection and that is the existing intersection into the existing.
Yeah, that's the existing driveway intersection, which would be shared between the two lots that'll be created by the subdivision. They're moving forward with the subdivision. The Planning Commission will see that this month, you all will see it next month.
I might ask staff, it's not relative to this, but is there any plan for long-term connectivity for, say, Davidson or adjacent property?
It would be a challenge because of the topography and the fact that Wilson Gulch pretty much separates the property from everything there, so this is one of the few properties out there that has direct highway access. That's why we're trying to limit the extent there. The one thing I would add, that in addition to these uses, there's nothing that would prohibit the applicant or a future owner to come back and seek an additional consideration of an additional specific use, but it would go back through the same process. We're comfortable with these uses, but we didn't want to expand it too broadly at this point.
I do have a question that just came back to me. It was simply, you know, not so directly related to this proposal, but looking at the map, I was wondering where is the, what is the path of the Smart 160 trail through these properties?
Kevin, tell me if I'm wrong, but it pretty much follows Wilson Gulch.
On the other side of the creek.
On the other side of the creek and then there's a connection up to Wilson Gulch Road, but if this area, it's on the north side of the Wilson Gulch drainage.
Okay, thank you.
The applicant has the last word, would you want to say anything else? I'm going to close the public hearing and look for a motion by city council.
I make a motion to approve the amendments to the South Fork Character District Master Plan and the, I'm sorry, Crater Plan Development to allow additional uses on Lot Four of the Crater subdivision to include those uses recommended by the Planning Commission and city staff as reflected in the Planning Commission minutes of April 23, 2018, and direct staff to amend the Character District Master Plan and PD documents to reflect the additional land uses.
Second?
Second.
A roll call please.
Counselor Bookie?
Yes.
Counselor Musec?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving on to a discussion and possible action regarding the adoption of an emergency ordinance, reenacting emergency ordinance 2018-08 of the City of Durango, creating the Lightner Creek Shelter on city-owned property as a temporary homeless shelter and declaring an effective date. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, as council knows, the emergency ordinance 2018-8 was adopted on April 3. Emergency ordinances are valid for 60 days unless extended, so this one is scheduled to expire on June 2. Since there's not another council meeting between now and the 2nd, it was necessary to bring it back to council for renewal. There really are no substantial changes to the new ordinance that effectively just readopts the old ordinance and it will extend it for an additional 60 days. And there's no, as far as fiscal impact, could be some costs associated with completion of improvements at the site, but adoption of this emergency ordinance should have minimal fiscal impacts in and of itself, so assuming council would like to extend the current ordinance, that's the purpose of having it in front of council at this point.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion by counselors?
I have one question that was prompted by the new map, which includes a designation of actually a fence all the way around, which, given the, what we've heard in the past, that makes, that strikes me as sensible. I did wonder about the site that's now articulated here for the portable toilets and dumpster that's across Lightner Creek, but not down at the footbridge, and so I wonder what about access to that, to those facilities?
The portable toilets would be at the parking lot so they could be serviced and then the trash containers could be on the bridge or also in the parking lot.
Okay, so that is the parking lot for the off-leash area?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
There's a little separation from the, from the bridge.
Yeah, okay, as a non-user of that park, I was unfamiliar with that, so I had, I had visualized all of that as being down by the footbridge.
They can't be serviced by the company if they're on the bridge.
All right, so, but for, for the folks who would be using the, using the shelter, they'd have to basically go either ford the stream or ford Lightner Creek or go all the way down to the footbridge.
Yeah, right now, I think we would suggest they use the bridge.
Be safer.
Fording the stream presents some other challenges with expenses and corps of engineers and a number of other things. We should take it one step at a time.
Any other discussion?
Well, if I might, I just wanted to update council that I did go on a tour with counselor or commissioner Westendorf of the current site and the current temporary homeless site up above the Tech Center, and I did speak with several of the residents. And my positions and concerns remain the same, however, I recognize that my sole ascension obviously has no impact on our course of action. Therefore, I do want us to be as successful as possible with the implementation of the shelter and especially assuming the significance of the responsibility we're undertaking. So there are a couple things, I think that, you know, going forward, obviously, we all know our goal is to get them out of the woods, to have them stop impacting the Elavita neighbors and the Questview neighborhood and mitigate the fire risk. A couple things, after speaking with some of the residents that I would like to just throw out there that we might want to consider, to make this the most viable alternative and one that we, that will really encourage use in order to make it successful, would be, I think someone needs to be communicating with the residents and understanding their needs. Number two, I think that we have to address the issue of safety. All of the residents that I spoke were adamantly concerned about the risk, the health risk, and I would just throw out that with being located where it is currently, and I would suggest that it might be more, a more viable alternative and one that is used by more residents and therefore mitigate the fire risk better. If we did have notice from the CDP HNE that in fact it was safe, it might just mitigate that. I recognize that we do, we are not obligated to do that according to our district attorney, but it might, it might help the residents find some security in that. I was also concerned about the, when I was up there, just vision, you know, I expressed this to our city manager, that the number, amount of belongings that the residents have, I'm very concerned will not fit in a 96 gallon bin. They really work on scaling it down and keeping them to a small minimum, but they have a tent, a pad, a sleeping tray, backpack, clothes, often a cooktop and utensils, and so it, we may need to consider the possibility of more than one storage unit perhaps, if we want this to be a viable used alternative. And there is a resident up there that is currently working a night shift at Denny's, and so we will have to consider the exceptions of what happens when someone has a job at night. We want them to keep their work. And there are residents up there that go to work every morning at 7:00 AM, and so this is going to be difficult for them. So I, I know, I don't, it's just some questions that I wanted to throw out there for discussions to make this really as viable and encourage as much use as we can to do exactly what we're trying to do.
And I appreciate that. I think, you know, maybe this will encourage some people to move into the VOA shelter and get out of the woods, let's say, and possibly look for other housing. That's, we can't cure all the ails, but I think right now, we're talking about, and my understanding, this is, this is only talking about extending the ordinance in terms of the date. So we can always have another discussion about more bins, let's say, with the staff. We can talk with staff about that, but right now, we're only talking about a calendar date.
And the only reason why I bring that up is because if, is, I would like to support the city's efforts in doing this, because I recognize we're moving forward and I want to help make it work. I just want it to be a viable, well-thought-out alternative that residents will use.
Well, I can tell you that the off-leash area was worked on back in the 80s and there's at least, I don't know, a couple of feet of soil down after all, after everything was removed. It's been, there's been thousands of people using the area, but where the trees are, that's a different part. City manager, is that correct?
Correct.
It's a different area, it was not dug up and moved, and so I think it will be, it's a different animal, I know it's a different animal. And it's got some bad press.
Well, the residents are concerned.
Well, then, I think, and I appreciate.
And they're the ones that have to make the decision to move there or not.
So maybe we should be, I agree, talking with them and I'm sure city staff will come up with a plan to do that, because I think what, our site has gotten some bad press. And so right now, we are doing the best that we can and we want it to be successful, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness. So I'm sure that we can work with staff to iron out some of those details.
I think it is a matter of education. There's been some vague news, quite honestly, portrayed about this particular site and its limitations and its hazards and by constituents of the homeless folks, and we now have to educate those folks to turn, to give them the proper analytical, I mean, they're not wanting to hear that at this point in time, but I don't think that's all we can do is try to talk to them about what the real hazards are as opposed to what they may have heard in the paper or other places.
Thank you, Counselor Bookie. Any other comments? With that, I'll look for a motion.
I move that we adopt the attached emergency ordinance. Do we have a number for that?
Yeah, actually, my cheat sheet, back to Amy, 10.
2018-10.
10.
The emergency ordinance 2018-10 of the City of Durango, reenacting emergency ordinance 2018-08, creating the Lightner Creek Shelter on city-owned property as a temporary homeless shelter and declaring an effective date.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Bookie?
Yes.
Counselor Musec?
No, my, still concerned.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving on to an ordinance of the City of Durango, amending Section 1760 of the Code of Ordinances Related to Pedestrian Safety and Access to Sidewalks and Public Rights of Way in the Downtown Business Area of the City and Regulations and Declaring an Effective Date. Mr. Nelson?
Thought we might start with a reading of the ordinance, particularly.
Please do.
So I think I asked Amber to do that.
So this will be, "An ordinance of the City of Durango, Colorado, amending Section 17-60 of the Code of Ordinances related to pedestrian safety and access to sidewalks and public rights of way in the downtown business area of the city and regulations and declaring an effective date. Whereas, the city council and city staff have received complaints from a wide variety of citizens and visitors about concerns over the safety of sidewalks and accessibility to the public sidewalks in the city, with a focus on concerns about people sitting and lying down in the most crowded portions of the downtown central commercial district. And whereas, numerous downtown business owners and managers have submitted complaints regarding the safety of pedestrians and reduced accessibility to the sidewalks and public rights of way by persons sitting or lying down on those sidewalks and rights of way. And whereas, similar concerns about those safety and accessibility issues have been expressed by the Durango Business Improvement District on behalf of the public and on behalf of the constituents of the bid. And whereas, the volume and intensity of the complaints prompted the city staff to conduct a public session on April 18, 2018, to take input on the issues of sidewalk safety and accessibility, particularly as those issues relate to persons sitting or lying down on the sidewalks in downtown and public rights of way. And whereas, 54 persons signed in at that public session and 34 persons gave testimony on the topic at that public session. And whereas, the testimony included recitations of numerous incidences where pedestrian safety and access have been impacted by persons sitting and lying down on crowded sidewalks and public rights of way. And whereas, the city council held a study session on April 24, 2018, to discuss the issue of sidewalk safety and accessibility. The council reviewed a summary of testimony given at the public session and additional comments received after that session. And whereas, the city council scheduled a public hearing on the issue of adoption of an ordinance to regulate the obstruction of sidewalks and public rights of way, particularly by persons sitting or lying down in congested areas. And whereas, the city council desires to minimize the congestion on sidewalks to make the downtown business area more hospitable to local citizens as well as out-of-town visitors, thereby promoting economic vitality. And whereas, the city council is committed to maximizing the public health, safety and welfare of the citizens and visitors to the city. And whereas, following the public hearing and review of all verbal and written testimony, the city council finds as follows. "The surface of the public sidewalks are constructed and maintained for the primary purpose of providing safe and unimpaired passage of pedestrians rather than for sitting or lying down. The surface of alleys, streets, railroad tracks, curbs, parking spaces and other public rights of way are constructed and maintained for the primary purpose of providing safe and unimpaired passage of vehicles and railroad uses rather than for sitting or lying down. The use of sidewalks and other public rights of way..." for purposes of sitting or lying down creates significant and serious safety concerns for pedestrians, vehicles, and train uses as well as for those sitting or lying down in those areas. Durango is host to many tourists and out-of-town travelers who are not familiar with the sidewalks and public rights of way, leading to increased concerns over safety and accessibility and conflicts with those who are using those areas for purposes other than their primary intended uses. The downtown business area, as described herein, is one of the most crowded areas in the city and raises significant concerns over pedestrian safety and accessibility, with those concerns being documented by public testimony received by city council. Durango has a lively nightlife, causing people to use the sidewalks and alleys late at night, with darkness increasing the chances of conflicts between pedestrians and persons sitting or lying on the sidewalks and public rights of way. There are established benches and other places to rest within the downtown business area that will afford more than adequate opportunities for persons to sit down or rest. The presence of persons sitting on the sidewalks and public rights of way is unexpected, creating a sense of hazard and disorder that discourages people from visiting the downtown business area. Persons who attempt to avoid the dangers and disorder caused by people sitting or lying down on the sidewalks often causes them to avoid the congestion and danger by walking in the streets, thereby creating an even greater hazard to pedestrians and traffic. Weather conditions during a portion of the year, including ice and snow, increase the hazards associated with restricted access to sidewalks and public rights of way in the downtown business area. The railroad tracks located within the downtown business area present unique and specific hazards to people sitting and lying down. The alleys in close proximity to Main Avenue are used for primary access to businesses in the alleys and by pedestrians visiting those businesses, causing conditions similar to those on the sidewalks downtown. People sitting and lying in the alleys or other rights of way create dangerous interactions with traffic and service vehicles such as delivery trucks, garbage trucks, and utility vehicles. People sitting or lying down near solid waste receptacles could suffer serious injury during operations to pick up those items. There are legitimate circumstances where a person may be required to sit or temporarily lie down on sidewalks, and reasonable exceptions to the restrictions are appropriate. Some of the testimony provided to the city council focused on objectionable behavior by persons in the downtown business area that is already illegal under state or local law, and the provisions of this ordinance are not directed at that behavior. Rather, this ordinance is focused on restricting acts that impair the safety and access to sidewalks and public rights of way. Whereas, the city council finds that the adoption of the restrictions contained herein will promote pedestrian safety and accessibility and are in the best interest of public health, safety, and welfare of the city."
Do I read the rest?
Could you read that again?
Yes. Where, oh. If I even have the last, whereas, I'm like, sure.
I don't think any...
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it's important for council to affirm those findings because any motion, assuming the council wants to make a motion to adopt, it's critical that we put a record that the basis of, you know, of the ordinance and those findings. And I'm open to questions, if council has any, about the remaining portions of the ordinance, including the map.
Are there questions from counselors?
I have one. The, the timing of 7:00 a.m. to 2:30, was there any thought in the ordinance? I mean, it just, and as I looked at it, I was thinking, well, you know, at 2:30, if somebody's laying in the street in, in the sidewalk, it's not any less dangerous if somebody happens. I, I realize there's less traffic at that time, but yeah, I just was curious what you thought about that.
I took direction from council's study session.
I don't, I, I brought it up because of the workers that are getting off work and going out of the businesses and maybe going to their cars at night, that I didn't feel it was very safe. I've worked until midnight downtown and then gone to my car. And it was more of a, it was a safety reaction, Chris.
Well, I was actually stating, I, I might not have said this very well, but what I was asking is why not longer?
Oh, you mean 24/7?
24 hours a day.
Well, again, I think that, and I think I may have answered the same question at the study session. I think that we really are trying to address times of the day when you're likely to have conflicts between pedestrians and people sitting on the sidewalk. And traffic does drop off presumably pretty quickly after 2:30 in the morning. I, my suggestion would be, and the reason I, and I, and I did specifically try to write this as narrowly as I thought possible to address the concerns raised by a variety of people during the testimony council's heard, I would say both as to time and as to area, we may find that we may need to make adjustments. And if that's the case, I think we can and we will. So, I, I think it's up to council in terms of the timing. But that's my rationale in terms of, and again, the direction that I received, it's contained in the ordinance, was the direction the council gave at the study session. So, that was not altered.
No, and that was to help the, the men and women getting off work.
And I, after I read it, I kind of agree with Chris in saying, you know, why limit it? But I agree, you know, I remember our discussion. I, I think I was the one that testified this.
Yes.
In fact, there is a good bit of traffic at 1:30 in the morning downtown. And, and that was one. I experienced the most amount of folks sitting on the sidewalk as well. So, those conflicts do occur at all hours of the day and night. But I agree with the city attorney's judgment in terms of creating a narrow focus and if we need to modify in the future. I think, yeah.
Counselor Yusef?
Mr. Nelson, these, these ordinances in other communities have held up. Have there been cases brought against them?
There were, there were cases brought in the Ninth Circuit against Seattle and against Tempe. Both of those were upheld in the federal courts. I'm not aware of any litigation, as I told council, in the, in the federal courts in the Tenth Circuit on this question. This is an evolving area, but I'm not aware of any case law that has struck down one of these ordinances, particularly in our, in our circuit. And I wouldn't have brought an ordinance to you that I didn't think was legally supportable, and I'll say that. So, again, I think it's, it needs to be narrow in scope. It needs to address the issue. Hopefully, we've done that. And so, I would, you know, I, I would recommend that we keep it narrow. And if we do run into another issue that isn't addressed here, I think we can readdress that.
And, and this may be better directed to our city manager. Are there other communities similar in size to ours in the state of Colorado that have enacted this ordinance?
Not to my knowledge. The cities that are our size would be Golden, Evans, Montrose. I do not think they have a set line. But I, I'd be happy to check that and confirm it.
And are there others in Colorado that you know of that have?
Uh, yes, I think there's... There's a number. Colorado Springs has one, Denver has one.
Okay.
There's a number of cities that have. Particularly in the Front Range.
Fort Collins.
Fort Collins adopted it much narrower, kind of, there's just a little different than this, but...
You had, you had a list earlier that we looked at.
I did have a list, and some of them are out of state. I think there are others that are, I didn't specifically reference or research cities our size particularly. But again, Tempe was cited numerous times, as you know. Tempe, Arizona, that has that kind of active sort of downtown sort of feel, the same as we do. They're a bigger city, obviously, but a similar sort of college town, sort of downtown touristy, so...
Counselor White, questions, comments?
I'm, yeah, I think the, I think it was, I'm grateful for the care that the city attorney has taken in crafting this. I was struck by that as I read it. And the, you know, I think it was important to have, have that rationale read as we, as we sit here. I think this is achieving what we are trying to do with this in terms of safety and accessibility on sidewalks and, and rights of way downtown. You know, in, in the end, it will come down to enforcement resources and how this is administered. But I think it has provided another tool for law enforcement to, you know, to help, help improve the overall atmosphere of downtown and the safety of our residents and tourists and workers.
Yes.
As, as they're frequenting our businesses or actually running our, running our businesses. And I think that's important.
Well, I had, I especially liked about the solid waste receptacles because I was driving down the alley behind the main mall and came upon a body by a garbage container. And I was afraid I was going to run over this body and call the police. And he was sprawled out. So, it was very disconcerting for the driver, and I was concerned for the man on the street. And it was sort of discombobulating, is what I can tell you. So, I appreciate the, the verbiage in this particular ordinance. And again, this gives also, I think we've heard a lot from the CBD people, and this gives them a voice that they can give information to the person sitting on the sidewalk or, or laying down, and then they can call 385-2900. And I've memorized that phone number. And I use it because the police respond quickly to the call. And so, I can only encourage anyone to memorize that number when, when there's trouble. The, our, our men and women in blue will respond. With that, I will look for a recommendation.
Motion?
This will be the ordinance 2018-11.
Well, I guess that's as simple as that. I'll do, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-11, which is an ordinance amending Section 17-60 of the Code related to pedestrian safety and access to sidewalks.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Absolutely, yes. And with that, we're closing the 20, the May 15th city council hearing. See you in June.